Counsel, if you will come to order, we do have a quorum tonight. Councilmember Reed is absent. He is out of town on business and didn't notify us appropriately. Just a moment, I'm going to ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an opening prayer by Irma Thomas. Following that, remain standing. And we'll be led in pledges by Councilmember Schaffner, first the American flag and second the Texas flag. Would you please stand?
Dear Almighty Father, first of all, thank you and praise you for our great nation and for our wonderful Towne Trophy Club. I thank you especially for the privilege and gift of prayer that gives us the opportunity to bring our petitions before your throne. You're a good and gracious God, and you've blessed us beyond our comprehension. In Scripture, you've said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you've established these authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. So we now hold up before you, our mayor, each of the members of our town council, and the supporting town staff, that you would graciously grant them wisdom to discern the needs of our town and its people, confidence to do what is best, and peace, knowing their work pleases you and benefits those who live and work here. I pray for the entire agenda set before them tonight, that you, O Lord, would give them full assurance of what they must do, and that you would be in the middle of all the fine details. For it is in the mighty name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. May be seated. We are in citizens' presentations. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, has anybody requested to speak?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience wanting to make a comment during citizens' presentations? Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will then move on to announcements and reports. Receive Town Manager Class's update regarding the following. Discussion and provide input regarding the same: volunteer reception, early voting, community events, hiring process, and Town Hall. Town Manager Class.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I want to start with letting y'all know that the staff's currently working on the volunteer appreciation reception. We're trying to lock down a date with the country club right now. It looks like June 2nd is our best, our best date right now, and we're working with council to ensure your availability. Early voting for the upcoming May 6th election begins on Monday, April 24th, runs through Tuesday, May 2nd. And the times and location are posted on the town's website. The community cleanup will be held on April 29th at 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Byron Nelson High School Northwest Parking Lot. And the spring garage sale is April 22nd from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The permits costs are $20, and they're available at the Tom Thumb and the Sassy Flamingo. Our summer recreation hiring is complete. We're working through some of the final processes there, the pre-employment processes. We've also hired a firefighter/paramedic, Justin Smith, this past week. Last week, I announced the selection of Amber Karkouskas as the town's finance director, so we'll be able to remove the interim title from her name tag shortly. And then, as you all might have seen this morning, I announced the selection of Wade Carroll as our next fire chief, and he will take command on May 1st here in Trophy Club. We've also received 26 applications for our vacant Director of Administrative Services position. I'm working through those applications now, and we'll do interviews along with an interview panel next week for those selections. And then we have an administrative assistant position for the permits and planning departments that was posted last week, and we're currently accepting applications for that. And then lastly, with regard to Town Hall, the construction's going very well. In the event that you've been out there and have seen it, we've had a couple rain delays over the last two weeks, but we're still on schedule for September 17th opening. The building's all dried in. They're working on the sheet rock inside now. And if you've noticed, all the brick is done on the west and the north sides. They're just about finished on the east. Next week, we should start seeing the front of the building bricked up. Windows are all in, and construction's going very well. No issues. And that's all I have for council.
Thank you, Tom. Counsel, any questions about these items? I just have two comments. One is, the Trophy Club Emergency Volunteers Association, who has supported our Fire Department and Police Department when emergencies happen, for years has conducted a pancake breakfast at the fire station on Election Day. Since our Election Day, we will not be voting at the fire station. We'll be voting at Medlin Middle School. TCEVA is still trying to coordinate a pancake breakfast somewhere around the Medlin Middle School area that will be selected and getting the word out about that, which they'll have pancakes and items from breadwinners, and then hot dogs close to the noon time. And anybody else have anything? All right. The consent agenda is our next item. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I'd like to remove Item 3 and Item 5 if there's no objection. All right. Hearing no objection, they'll be removed from consent. I would then entertain a motion to approve Items 1, 2, 4, and 6.
I'll make a motion to approve Items 2, 4, and 6.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. 2, 4, and 6.
I'll second.
I already had a second. Thank you.
Insurance.
All right, it's moved to approve Items 2, 4, and 6 by Ro, seconded by Schaffner. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Counsel, we removed Item 3 because our finance director brought to our attention some issues that she found in the, I think, the first quarter investment report. Is that right, Amber? First quarter or was it second quarter?
First quarter.
First quarter. And so we removed it so she could report about that and you could ask questions. So at this time, I'll turn the floor over to Amber.
Hi, Counsel. So we found a few errors with the first quarter report. Mainly, I'll draw your attention to the certificates of deposit and the sum of the subtotals of the CDs. The first quarter report just didn't have the correct formula for summing. It was very simple, and I don't think there was any intention behind that error. So we found it, corrected it, and it's just a difference of that last line. It affected the interest column and the ending balance column. And if you see that, that last line is Discover Bank. The interest was $887. That was off. And the $240,000 ending balance, that total was off. So we corrected that. The life column, again, under CDs, those dates were incorrect. I think that they were just carried over from report to report incorrectly. So inserted some formulas that would calculate the date to the actual date, and that gives you a better idea of when those CDs are maturing. Also updated the subtotals under life and yield for CDs, as well as the total cash and investments. Didn't, I didn't agree with the calculations that were currently there. I thought they were carried over incorrectly, and just internal didn't make sense to me. So again, I updated formulas to do some products. We had a weighted average, and that would provide you just a better idea of the CDs and how much each contained versus the yield, and that would give you a better idea of your overall life and days that you have left, and again, the yield for all of those. So again, not significant changes, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And from here on out, they should be a better reflection of where we stand.
All right. Thank you. Any questions about that, Counsel? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve Item 3 on the consent agenda.
We need to approve Item 3 on the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion to approve Item 3 by Councilmember Perro, seconded by Councilmember Kurtz. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. It did pass. Item 5. Item 5, we're pulling because the recommendation of council is that we want to, no, I'm sorry. That's not it at all. That wasn't the reason. We're pulling Item 5 because Councilmember Schaffner wanted to have a discussion about the amounts and the reasons for the change. So I'm first going to go to Town Manager Class about that, why we're considering this and his feeling about it.
Thank you. We just wanted to bring to council's attention that there were some inconsistencies with the approval authorities with regard to the town manager's approval authorities, and we wanted to bring that before council to ensure that we were in agreement with a $50,000 limit for the town manager's authority. And to make that consistent as we move forward. Amber?
Yes. The prior procurement policy came before you, or a piece of it came before you last May, where the $50,000 delegation to the town manager was the limit, except for co-ops and purchasing boards, in which case it could exceed $50,000, and the language that was written seemed to be limitless. So we took that out because we felt like $50,000 should be the cap regardless of the purchasing situation. So that was the main change with that, and that was, that was where we stand.
It isn't $50,000 the state recommended? Am I, do I have that wrong?
I'm not sure if it's the state recommended. It's, it seems to be kind of a standard, but all cities depend. They vary, and it depends on their council and the will of council, and so.
All right. Fine. So Councilmember Schaffner, you requested this item be removed.
Yeah, we, we, this ordinance goes back to 2011-22, and it came, it came back to us on May of 2016, and it was on consent. We really never discussed that amount. It was on consent, and we voted on it, and I'm not sure that we just overlooked that or I don't remember discussing it. Perhaps one of y'all do, but my recommendation is to go back to what we had in 2011, which is $25,000 on number one, as far as contracts for the purchase of goods or services equal to or less than $25,000. And then I wouldn't mind discussing Item 3. Originally, they, originally in 2011, they had an individual contract change order for an amount of $10,000 or less, or multiple contract change orders with a cumulative total of $25,000 or less. The way they have it now, or what they have in this ordinance was $50,000 for a change order. To me, I'd kind of want to see some of those change orders if they're, if they're huge. I think we, there's two reasons that I brought this up. One is the building at Harmony Park. I think that that was a colossal mistake that we made, that that didn't come back to us. And they kept it below $50,000, and so they didn't have to come back to us, or they didn't have to come for approval. And so I'd, I'd much rather that be lower, and I don't mind, you know, a couple of meetings ago, we had a situation where there was two trucks that were on our agenda because they, they totaled over the $50,000 threshold. And I question that, why is this on the agenda? Because I'd never seen that before. We had never, that had never, I've never seen one for $25,000 or more come to us. I've never seen one for $50,000. And to Amber's credit, she put that on there. I don't mind, and you know, if we, if we set this at $25,000, I don't mind those items being on consent. I just think that that's a, a good number to have, where we can just keep an eye on some of that, those things that obviously were approved in the budget but have gone beyond that $25,000 threshold.
So I think some, the only concern I have is, is that going to delay processes if we're having to constantly bring an item that's greater than $25,000 before council? Now, I don't know how many of those happen.
I was going to say, yeah.
But that would be the question I'd have.
So I just did a quick analysis, since you brought this up today. Haven't researched in depth. I will if you, that's your will. But as of this year, from October to 3/31, we had a total of 10 items that were over $25,000 and under $50,000. So just in that small range of what we're talking about tonight, because again, anything over $50,000 would be brought to you regardless. So there were 10 items, and those, those were approved in the budget, supplemental items and other items in the budget. They included cars and veterans memorial parking lot, and the memorial itself, and Town Hall, et cetera. They were just different items. There were 10 of them so far, and that's in two quarters. But that doesn't also include projects. So I would, I would want to do further research to say, hey, there's, you know, five, 10, 15 invoices that all add up to one project, and could that be over $25,000? So there could be a lot more than just 10 items, is the point I'm trying to make. And the only concern I would have too is that that would slow procurement down. Anything over $3,000 has to be issued on a purchase order. And then anything over $25,000, the town manager has to look at and approve. So just so that you know, those are our processes internally. But again, as, as Councilman Schaffner said, if it was on consent, or even if you want to talk about it, I mean, of course, it's at your will. I just didn't, I just don't want it to slow down the procurement process.
And I looked at several different towns today, and it, it's all over the place. It's not, there are some that were $50,000. I found some that were $25,000. I found a few towns that were $15,000, and larger than us. These were towns that were larger than us. And so there, I don't think there is any, it, she's right, it's at the will of the council, I think, at that, at that point.
Okay. Councilmember Kurtz and then Councilmember Lamont.
I guess I look at this from a little different point of view. For me, it's, it's not the dollar amount. It's, it's the spirit of how we're doing something. So I'll take the storage shed, for instance. I think we were pretty, we were pretty direct in what we wanted done, and the spirit of that changed because it was, it was under $50,000. So what we directed wasn't what was built, and we spent a lot more money on it. So I'm looking more for, if we direct something and there's a change from that direction, that we should, we should know about it, and we should be able to vote on it, as opposed to a dollar figure, because you can always manipulate the dollars and change things. I think for me, it's more, so when you go against what we, the spirit of what we were looking to do and going around it, and then we don't find out about it until it's too late. And that's what I want to make sure that we guard against, you know, put some guardrails in so that doesn't happen.
All right. Councilmember Lamont.
Do the thing. Amber, did you say that over $25,000, the town manager looks at it?
Yes, sir.
What's the process under $25,000?
I approve. So from $3,000 to $25,000.
It's got to be on a PO.
It has to be on a PO, and I make sure that adheres to our procurement policy. So I'm looking at a number of things to make sure that, you know, it's in line with, with what our policies are and what's, and what's legal for us to do, and also with what's budgeted and what's within your will.
My thinking is I could go with the $50,000 as far as initially, but on change orders at $50,000, that, that seems high to me.
All right. Anybody else? Yes.
Do you have any of the cities listed that are in the 25 or 15? I'm just out of curiosity.
I know I, I looked up, I know I don't.
Okay. I was just curious.
I have it, I had it at home, but I don't.
First time.
I've got one.
How many years is he, how many years has he been? First time he's been speechless. Look what I just did.
Lack of preparation.
Look what I just did. I will say real quick, before we throw it to John, I, I agree with Greg on the change order aspect, and we just had an extensive conversation two weeks ago about change orders. So we should, we should probably look at maybe returning that to the way it was prior to the consent item last year. I'm on the fence with the, with the overall, though. I'm certainly unhappy with the way that shed project turned out as well, cost-wise, but I don't know if, if that alone is reason to change the policy.
And I think that one of the reasons that, really, one of the reasons that I bring this up is because two weeks ago or a month ago, I can't remember when Amber put that on. That is the actual first time that I've ever seen something put on our agenda to approve based on it going over a dollar amount.
It wasn't being done before.
And so I don't, I don't, certainly I don't remember prior to 2016 coming to us for anything less than 25, and I don't know that we had anything over 50 besides those, those vehicles. But, so that's, that's a little, that was one of the concerns that I had, that, that those things weren't coming back. And then obviously, something so out of control that we couldn't stop it because it was under $50,000. We just, we, we couldn't stop what they started, you know? And so that's, that's another reason that gave me concern. I'm not saying that the current staff that we have, I, I have a lot of faith, but it's just a, I just kind of want to pull back a little bit and say, okay, anything over 25, I just want to see, even if it's on consent.
All right. So just to give you a little history on the two automobiles, or two trucks, whatever they were, two vehicles. Actually, Chief Arada was acting town manager at that time, brought it to my attention, brought up the fact that he thinks that council should deal with that, and I agree with that. And so that's kind of how it started happening about it. So then Lamont, I think you had your hand up, didn't you?
Yeah. As far as the $50,000, I think we have new team leaders in management and finance, and I guess I would suggest that we stay with the $50,000.
Okay. So we have, we have Item 1 that deals with the $50,000, and in just a minute, we're going to move this ordinance, and you can modify if you want to when you move it, or we can make an amendment. So Item 3 was your other suggestion, and that was a change order for lesser than an amount of $50,000 or 25% of the original contract price. So I heard some comments about that too. Any other comments about that?
Well, I'd just like to bring it down to 25.
What was the original ordinance amount, Philip?
The original said, "An individual contract change order for an amount of $10,000 or less." This is change order. Or multiple contract change orders with a cumulative total of $25,000 or less.
Okay. All right. So before we look for a motion to approve, Town Manager Class, any comments about this?
No, I have none.
All right. So I would look for a motion to approve ordinance 2017-09 with whatever amendments you think are appropriate if someone wants to move that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 5 with the change on B1 to $25,000 and the change on B3 to read like it did in 2011. I can give that to Holly.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve and seconded. Motion by Schaffner, seconded by Ro. Any questions about what the motion is saying? It's changing Item B1 to say $25,000, and Item 3 to go back to the way it was in the 2011 ordinance. Is that correct, Philip?
Yeah, "An individual contract change order for an amount of $10,000 or less, or multiple contract change orders with a cumulative total of $25,000 or less."
Okay. So that matters before us. So I'm going to comment about the motion that was made. I have a little concern about the $10,000 on large projects like streets, that an individual order might very well be above $10,000, and it would delay the project potentially. So that's one concern I have about the $10,000. Given the fact that we're still building the new Town Hall, we hope that we don't have change orders greater than, but we surely could. And so again, that might delay the process. So I don't know what your, your feeling about that is, but I'm concerned about the $10,000 as a single change order for a street project.
Well, after, after the thick item that we got last meeting, I wish we would have seen those change orders at $10,000.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. I'm going to call for the vote. All those approving ordinance 2017-09 as moved at the dais. Show your hands. All right. All opposed, same sign. And Lamont is opposed. Everybody else is in favor. All right. Counsel, without objection, I'm going to move Item 9 up because we have guests here tonight who do have a plane to catch, and so I'm going to try to get them out of here a little earlier, and apologize for those people that are here for the proclamations that you'll have to wait just a few more minutes. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution relating to the giving of notice of intention to issue Town of Trophy Club Texas combined tax and revenue certificate of obligation, Series 2017, and provide an effective date. So I have two guests here tonight. Mark McLaney and Julie Partain are both here. Mark, do you have some comments?
Very briefly, my name's Mark McLaney, Samco Capital Markets, the town's financial advisor. Julie Partain with Bickers, I mean, Praisewell, not Giuliani anymore, the town's bond lawyer. We've been working with staff and working together on this $4.5 million certificate of obligation and how it would impact your bond payments. I think we've managed it very well. Amber, John, and Mr. Class have been putting together a lot of this information. We're ready to move forward. The notice of intention resolution put together by Ms. Partain states what the projects are and the amount not to exceed, and it states that we would sell the obligations on May 23rd, 2017, which is a council meeting day. We would receive bids that day, competitive sale bids that morning, and bring them to your all's approval that evening. And at that point, it would be an ordinance authorizing the issuance of them, of the certificates of obligation, and at that point, they would in theory be issued once Julie gets it approved through the Attorney General of the State of Texas. I know you all worked through this a couple weeks ago at your last council meeting. We're happy to go through the numbers or go through the actual resolution. Turn it back to you all for questions.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Mr. McLaney. All right. So we are looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2017-05, and I'm going to see if we had to fill in the blanks there. Give me just a second. Was there anything to fill in the blanks?
Effective date. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-05, effective April 11th, 2017.
I'll second.
That was easy.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Ro, a second by Councilmember Perro. Any other discussion or questions, anybody? Julie didn't get to say a word, did she?
Just don't take United back. Have an extra seat for you.
Okay. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous.
Thank you all very much. We'll continue pushing it forward with your staff. We'll be here May 23rd with the results. Thank you for moving me up. I'm the one that has to catch a flight, and I'm on Southwest. So, thank you all.
Good move.
All right. We'll go back to Item Number 7. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the Town Council declaring May 4th, 2017 as Day of Prayer in Trophy Club. It is proclamation 2017-02, and I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Perro for reading of the proclamation and a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Trophy Club Texas, proclamation number 2017-02. A proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club Texas to recognize May 4th, 2017- 4, 2017, as the Day of Prayer in Trophy Club, recognizing that 2017 is the 66th consecutive annual observance of the National Day of Prayer and providing an effective date. Whereas, public prayer and national days of prayer have a long and significant history in American tradition dating back to the first call to prayer in 1775, when the Continental Congress asked the colonies to pray for wisdom in forming a nation. And whereas, these times of national supplication were made official in 1952, when President Harry Truman signed a joint resolution of the U.S. Congress, which enacted legislation setting aside an annual day of prayer for the nation. And in 1988, this law was amended permanently, setting the day as the first Thursday of every May. And whereas, the National Day of Prayer enables us to recall and teach the way in which our forefathers sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions, thus reaffirming the spiritual principles upon which this nation was founded. And whereas, the National Day of Prayer belongs to all Americans and is a day that transcends differences, bringing together citizens to honor God and give Him thanks for the many liberties and blessings we have received, among them, the freedom to gather, worship, and pray. And whereas, Thursday, May 4, 2017, is the 66th observance of the National Day of Prayer in our nation and simultaneously, the 25th consecutive observance for the citizens in this 76262 community, having as its theme for this year, "For Your Great Name's Sake, Hear Us, Forgive Us, Heal Us," taken from Daniel, Chapter 9, verse 19, which says, "O Lord, listen; O Lord, forgive; O Lord, hear and act, for Your sake, O my God." And whereas, on this day, leaders and citizens across our nation and state will unite and heed the call to humbly come before Almighty God to acknowledge our dependency upon Him, to seek His divine guidance, protection, blessings, and strength, to meet the challenges that we face, both present and future, and to pray for peace throughout our nation and the world. Now therefore, I, C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, by the power vested in me as Mayor of Trophy Club, Texas, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 4, 2017, as a Day of Prayer in Trophy Club, to coincide with the National Day of Prayer, and that this proclamation shall take effect from and after its date of passage in accordance with law, and it is so proclaimed, passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this 11th day of April, 2017. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Proclamation Number 2017-02.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve by Perro, seconded by Schaffner. Any discussion? I do have Irma Thomas, who was going to make a comment. Irma, did you want to say something?
I'm just excited. I just want to thank each of you for supporting the proclamation, and I'm excited that we are celebrating the 25th here in Trophy Club in this area. And I hope that each of you will be able to join us, as well as those in the audience, on May 4, 12 noon, Trophy Club clock tower. Thank you.
All right. All in favor of approval of the proclamation, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. At this time, we'll go to item eight. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the Town Council declaring April, 2017, as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Trophy Club, Proclamation 2017-03. So, I will ask Councilmember Perro to read it and make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Trophy Club, Texas, Proclamation Number 2017-03. A proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to recognize the month of April, 2017, as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. Whereas, in federal fiscal year 2013, 52 states reported 678,932 victims of child abuse or neglect. And whereas, child abuse is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas, our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas. And whereas, child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas, protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas, communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2017, as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Town of Trophy Club. Further, I urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families, passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this 11th day of April, 2017. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Proclamation Number 2017-03.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Perro and a second by Councilmember Rowe. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Whoops, I'm sorry. I voted, and I had a note here, but it's approved anyway. So, we have a guest tonight, Scott Hensel. If you want to come forward, Scott. He's a board member of the Children's Advocacy Center of Denton County. If you're not aware, we actually support that organization through our budget annually. Along with that, we've had board members who have lived in town over the years and been involved in that. They provide a service to young children, or children, I guess, of any age, in giving legal matters and providing counseling, and I think, medical support when necessary when they've been abused. So, Scott, you have the floor.
Thank you. That was an incredible way that you put that. It just got my everything flowing for what we do. I do serve on the board. I'm the treasurer of the organization, and I just want to share just a few comments with you. So, the mission of our advocacy center in Denton County is to provide justice and healing for the bravest children that we have in Denton County. We have some stats that you gave earlier. I have some specific stats that I'll give you. I'm an accountant by trade, so I love the numbers. The justice part is what I really enjoy, really, because what we're saying is... But we're not going to put up with this in Denton County. Prior to the advent of advocacy centers, in Denton County, the prosecution rate was about 8% for sexual offenders. Through the multidisciplinary team that comes together, this is local law enforcement, child protective services, district attorney, sexual assault nurses, interviewers, trained people that know how to deal with this, the prosecution rate is 80% or higher. So, it does make a difference in the local community. From the healing perspective that you talked about, we did 700 forensic interviews. So, this is outreaches that children made last year in Denton County. To those 700 outreaches, we provide 11,000 counseling sessions that are all free of charge that come in. This is to the child, the families, and everybody involved. Play therapy, group therapy, psychological assessments. We do provide food, limited on the medical piece, but all sorts of services that we provide. So, thank you guys so much for supporting the organization. From a funding perspective, we get about 30% of our funds from the Federal Victim of Crime Act. We get 50% of our funds from the local communities, and you guys fully fund that each year, and we're so thankful for that. The remaining pieces of our budget, we raise on our own through galas and special events. So, on behalf of the Children's Advocacy, thank you so much for your support through your chief of police and town council, the mayor, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody have any questions? Thank you for coming tonight and bearing with us with your patience. Oh, yes, just a moment. Thank you, Holly. So, I do have the proclamations for both of you. So, Irma, if you'd come up. And do we have somebody taking a picture? Holly, you're in?
I'm in.
All right. Let's go right up here.
I'm impressed.
I thought that was big.
I'm three.
Three.
Wait, does it one, two, three, go?
He says three.
Ceremonial part.
She's better with that.
One, two, three.
Trying to hide on one.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Should have done like Kelly.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I think we're down to item 10. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Standards of Care. Conduct a public hearing regarding an ordinance adopting a new Section 1.08.001 entitled Summer Adventure Camp Programs Standards of Care of Division 1, entitled generally of Article 108, entitled Parks and Recreation of Chapter 1, entitled general provisions of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances, and providing an effective date. In item B, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance adopting a new Section 1.08.001 entitled Summer Adventure Camp Programs Standards of Care of Division 1, entitled generally of Article 1.08, entitled Parks and Recreation of Chapter 1, entitled general provisions of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances, and providing an effective date. In item B, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance adopting a new Section 1.08.001 entitled Summer Adventure Camp Programs Standards of Care of Division 1, entitled generally of Article 1.08, entitled Parks and Recreation of Chapter 1, entitled general provisions of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances, and providing an effective date. In item B, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance adopting a new Section 1.08.001 entitled Summer Adventure Camp Programs Standards of Care of Division 1, entitled generally of Article 1.08, entitled Parks and Recreation of Chapter 1, entitled general provisions of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances, and providing an effective date. It is 7:42, and we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter during the public hearing? Hearing none? We will then close the public hearing at 7:43. Maybe it took a minute. Better I have to do seconds or something, right?
You got to start them in 45 seconds or whatever.
I guess so. I don't know. All right. So, we are on item B, which is taking the action and adopting of the ordinance, ordinance 2017-10, Youth Programs Standards of Care. Anybody want to introduce or say anything? Tom, we have any staff talking about that?
I believe y'all have some recommendations at the dais, item number 10.
All right. So, at the dais, you have some recommendations that were submitted by Councilmember Schaffner. Councilmember Schaffner, you want to talk about this?
Yeah. The changes I made are... It looks like a lot, but it's actually pretty simple. I didn't want to box this into just a summer program, just in case we wanted... There are towns that have spring break programs. There are towns that have winter programs. There are towns that have break, you know, during different breaks. And so, we sort of boxed ourselves in to just summer programs. And so, what I've done is removed summer adventure camp to just say youth programs. And then, I've added a definition for youth programs, and I've added that the standard of care applied to all youth programs operated by the department, including but not limited to summer adventure camp programs. And then, then another add is that this actually is required... Perhaps somebody will answer why this is just now coming to us, but this is...
Page is this last one on?
Page three on mine. The law actually requires us to have a public hearing and an agenda item each year to approve this standard of care. So, it's not just a one-time, and we're done. It requires it each year. And then, I changed some of the inspection monitoring. I've added the police department. And the only word I might add to the end of number one, C1, is "as required." And the reason that I added this is if you go further into the document, they require... Some of our requirements are for somebody to be trained with a fire extinguisher. And so, I just thought perhaps we put, you know, the health and safety, put that on our police and fire, and then the code enforcement.
All right. So, Phillip, are you wanting to move this ordinance with changes at the dais?
Yes. I will make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 10 with the changes that I've given at the dais. Second.
All right. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Schaffner, a second by Councilmember Lamont to approve ordinance 2017-10 as modified at the dais with the handout. So, Adam, have you had a chance to review this? And David, have you had a chance to review this? Do we have any issues with that?
No.
All right. Counsel, any questions?
Just curious, did the law change or something that we... Going forward, we have to do this every year? Or should we have been doing this in the past?
No. There was some information that came out late last year that a lot of the cities hadn't done this, including us, just in recreation city departments. In fact, there's another city that's already asked me for this ordinance when our council passes it. So, there's a lot of cities that just didn't. Some of the older cities that have engaged in healthcare for years with school-based program and things like that, like Dallas, they've done it for over, I know, over a decade. But yeah, a lot of the ones that just started the summer-based programs were not aware of this. If they were ones that ran after school programs with the school during the year, the schools had knowledge of it, and a lot of those cities adopted the programs. But so, we're just... We are getting to this now, and then going forward, it'll be, as Councilman Schaffner said, every year annually.
All right. So, before I ask for the vote, the staff believe they have enough in writing that you'll be able to accurately modify the ordinance without it coming back on consent?
I can modify it and also send it out to council. That way, y'all can review it before we get it signed.
Yeah. That's the best part. You don't have to bring it back unless there's some confusion or...
Okay.
I would ask... I do have a comment.
Yes.
I would ask that the rec coordinator make twice-weekly visual inspections. I know it was from two weeks up to one, but I believe with programs like this, they should be more hands-on, and it should be twice a week. So, right now, you...
Does that modify the ordinance?
Yeah. Do you know what section that is?
It's number two on page three. Recreation coordinator will make weekly visual inspections of the program. And, you know, I would say twice-weekly, once early in the week, once later in the week, you catch things much faster. Yeah. Yeah, make a motion to amend.
Second. All right. So, I have Councilmember Kurt making a motion to amend, as seconded by Lamont. Are we clear about that, that you're changing the word "weekly" to "twice-weekly"?
Twice-weekly, exactly.
Is that clear for everybody? All right. All in favor of the... Did we vote on the main motion?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion to amend? Please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Any other questions?
I do have a quick comment about this and how it came about and what Adam was just telling us about. I mean, I can only imagine. I do not envy the task that town staff has in trying to decode what is probably reams of serpentine state law to make sure that we are always compliant. But what I do see on every year's budget is money spent on conferences, money spent on education. I would like to see at some point if we don't marry the money we're spending on things like that, which are certainly state-specific in most cases, to something that involves legislative updates, compliance audits, anything that helps us stay on top of these things. Because I know it's tough. I mean, I deal with it with privacy law in the EU and the US all the time at work, and it's hard. US all the time at work, and it's hard, you have to be on top of your sources. So, I think that would be a, a, a good way to utilize the money we already spend.
Town manager, Class, did you make note of that comment? I think that's a good thing to follow through on.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Riley. So, we have the main motion as amended before us, I believe, is that right? Mayor Protem Lamont?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the main motion as amended, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is approved, it is unanimous. Council, we are on item number 11. I'm gonna, without objection, I'm gonna request that we consider that after executive session. We do have some legal advice that needs to be given to us prior to us making decisions. And so, our attorney, David Dodd, recommended that we move that down, and it will be under item 14, it's still the same section of consultation with attorney that, that's allowed. All right, item number 12. Discussion of and provide direction to the town regarding the Memorial Day ceremony and dedication of the Veterans Memorial. Councilmember Perro and Councilmember Rowe added this to the agenda. Councilmember Perro, your remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Sergeant Di Aquino for being here this evening. He's from the Keller United States Army Recruiting Office, and he'll, he's bought a paper for the new Veterans Memorial. And thank him for his service and for being willing to participate in the dedication yet to come. This past Saturday on the 8th, I met with the veterans of the Metroport Veterans Association to discuss the dedication ceremony for the new Veterans Memorial, it's currently under construction, to find out what their thoughts were about having a ceremony that was separate and apart from Memorial Day or to be included with Memorial Day, to get their sense for doing that. And it was unanimous, without question, that they want Memorial Day to be separately celebrated, not celebrated, but remembered on May 29th, and that the dedication for the new Veterans Memorial take place on November 11th, 2017, at 11:00 a.m. It's a Saturday, which is the 99th anniversary of the end of World War I, the roar to end all wars, and the armistice moment that, that started Veterans Day. And so, it was across the board, and I've been getting emails and PMs and things all agreeing with having Memorial Day on the 29th and dedicating our new memorial on November 11th. On Monday, the 10th, I met with Adam Adams and Sherri Lewis to discuss the veterans' dedication and Memorial Day. And they also felt that separating them out would be appropriate, and I spoke with the town manager, Tom Class, who also agreed. And so, I would like to ask the council to consider doing exactly that, allowing us to go forward on May 29th, as we started last year, with a Memorial Day ceremony at Medlin Cemetery, utilizing minimal staff to put up some bunting and provide a sound system at the cemetery, and then some police traffic control at Medlin Cemetery. I'll be working with the country club to try to get better parking than we had last year. And we will also cut the ceremony from one hour to 30 minutes. We learned some lessons last year, and it will not be as long as it was then. Also, Adam is gonna work with me on vinyl signage to advertise the Memorial Day ceremony and Veterans Day ceremony. And Sherri will also take our booklets and reduce them from multiple pages down to one fold over, single page, four-sided. So, we'll save cost of printing and everything like that and still accomplish the same task. The one question that did come up was that big stone entryway to the Veterans Memorial, which was originally dedicated on November 11, 2012, by the Trophy Club, the Garden Club as division of the Trophy Club Women's Club. And now that we're going through this, this redesign, and now that the town is actively taking over the Veterans Memorial, it was suggested that we modify that entry stone to read "Dedicated November 11, 2017, Town of Trophy Club, Trophy Club Women's Club, and Metroport Veterans Association to bring all three bodies together on this new dedication day." I'll be working with Sergeant Di Aquino and other recruiters and other military individuals between now and Veterans Day to arrange for a beautiful ceremony on November 11th with hopefully a multi-branch color guard, drummers, buglers, and so on, at no cost to the town or volunteer services, to make it something that people can remember. And it was also suggested that because this is a dedication of a, of a special memorial, that we come up with some kind of a memento for the veterans and those participating in the program. And it was suggested we do something like a challenge coin, if you've ever seen something like this. And this is the one I got last November from the Burgess family, the Gold Star family who participated in our ceremony for their son, and they had his picture put on the front and a little dedication on the back. So, that was also proposed as something we might consider doing as well between now and November, to leave a permanent remembrance in the hands of each person who participates in this dedication. So, that's about where we've gone so far, and I hope that the town council will allow town staff to participate in the direction they have sought to do. And I would also point out, I've spoken with Rhonda Labor, who is the new head of the Trophy Club Women's Club Veterans Memorial Committee, and they collected a lot of money when they were discussing their design, which would have been rather expensive to build, which we did not go with. We came up with a more simple design. And they've got to use that money for something, for the memorial. So, they're considering and discussing coming to us with a statue of some kind, or maybe two statues, that could be placed at their expense and their crews and so on, in the memorial as a women's club enhancement. And we'll have a chance to look at it and approve it and so on and so forth. But they need to use that money for that memorial, because that's how it was, how it was raised. So, I said, well, we'll certainly, you know, let them come in and present their, their suggestions, and we'll look at it. So, that's pretty much it, and I hope the, the town and the staff will, will support the veterans of our community for Memorial Day and for Veterans Day as I've outlined.
Thank you, Jim. So, a couple of comments and maybe other questions that people have. Number one, on the sign, can we make sure that, however it's done, that you somehow involve the Women's Club in the wording? Because it seems like the sign there currently talks about them dedicating it on a day.
Yes, November the 12th, 2012.
So, should we incorporate that this is a rededication or something like that? I'm just saying, just make sure we don't offend, is my point.
I talked to Rhonda about that, and she said, well, now that the town's taken it over, you can, as far as she's concerned, it's not an issue, as long as they're mentioned. And that's why I said we'd have the town, the Trophy Club Women's Club, and Metroport Veterans, all-inclusive on this dedication. And she didn't have any objections to that.
So, would you also reach out to the president of the Women's Club-
Sure will.
About that, just to make sure communications isn't stopping?
Absolutely.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Secondly, and then last year, if you remember, I think we had a great Memorial Day, which was our first celebration last year, and we had to scramble a little bit. It did require police, various people to come support that aspect. Obviously, it's their holiday, and people were doing that. So, Tom, just want to make you aware of that, make sure that whatever needs to be done appropriately. Adam, did you adjust your budget to allow that this year for any funds? I know that we spent some money last year, but I don't know, you probably didn't reimburse the police department, I mean, you know, that kind of thing.
No, no, the police is, it's totally in a separate, it doesn't really, they actually have to do it on their side, on the police side. On my side, we're, we're taken care of. It's really a minor impact this year because the materials were all bought last year. So, we're just looking at a little more OT and really just, I think, like Councilmember Perro said, it's just some bunting. So, the Veterans Day now we're planning for, that's, that is what I'm planning for, for next year, but Memorial Day, we're fine from our budget.
Can we-
All right, Councilmember Kurtz?
Can we use hot tax to pay back this department? I mean, we, I have to imagine-
That's something that-
Probably need to review that.
That, that town manager-
Can we look into that?
Class and town attorney Dodd are looking into right now some issues related to that. Thank you for bringing that up. Tom?
With regard to the police department, it'd be very minimal over time, potentially probably two officers for just the brief period of time for the ceremony or the memorial.
The control in Medlin was done by the auxiliary, young, young folks who did traffic control inside.
Sure.
They just needed some on the street to make sure nobody got, you know, involved in a vehicle incident.
Right.
So, the only other comment, then I'll come to you, Greg, I made, what my observation was, we told people, you're not gonna pull into the cemetery and to park on the street or elsewhere. And I don't think that was handled too well. There, there surely is a fair amount of parking in the cemetery, obviously.
Well, actually, there's not. Twenty-three spaces for handicapped and elderly and that kind of thing, and then 10 spaces up the middle, so we can park 33 vehicles.
Yeah. So, I, I realize that, I'm just thinking, what I observed and what was said was people were stopped at the entrance and basically told to park elsewhere. And so, first come, first served, however we're gonna deal with that, I just think it needs to be making sure that the young people who are doing that recognize those issues.
Now, there is a, a provision for driving in and dropping people off at the little roadway that leads to the shed, and then leaving to park, so you don't make all the party in the car walk.
Okay.
But because of the fact, we had so many speakers, and we had Girl Scout parents and, and the color guard and everything, our, our spaces were full, and, and that was not even considering all the people that were out in the street.
All right, Greg?
I understand the dedication event in November, but will the vets park be ready on May 29th? That we could have it there, alleviate some of the parking problem?
It'll be, it'll be finished by the end of this month, from what I'm told.
Is there any reason why we don't have the May 29th event there instead of the cemetery?
Well, the cemetery, Memorial Day is designed for those who have passed primarily, and to remember the sacrifice in their typically, like at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier in Washington, it's done in the cemetery because it's Memorial Day. Where Veterans Day is designed to honor those who are yet still alive primarily, and still serving or have served in our country and are still, you know-
The fact that it says Veterans Memorial Park, that's not related to the-
Well, it's to memorialize their service as veterans for having put their lives on the line and gone off to war and, you know, that kind of thing.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, the only thing that I would add is, I think that the, I'm not so sure that we need to put a rededic, rededication. I, if the, if the date on the thing is 2012, I think that that's basically saying, here's when the, the idea was approved. Oh, because I thought that our whole intention was just to finish the project. So, it wasn't, it wasn't like we came in with a new idea and boom, you know, we're redoing something.
That's true.
We're just finishing the original vision that the 2011, 2012 council started. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I, I just, I'm not-
It's an open, I, I just threw it out there to see what the council's thoughts were.
I mean, there might be room on there to etch something else, but I don't, I don't know that I, I, I'm not sure I would be in favor of getting a whole new monument stone, since we just completed the project is, is, was my whole intention of the motion that I made.
There are three options that, in fact, the engraver who did that original stone is the same guy who's doing our bricks and who's doing the caps for the, for the service towers. And he said he was gonna give us three proposals on how to do a change.
Are there words on both sides or just one?
The one, one.
Okay, so it, it may be-
It does recognize people who gave money.
Right.
I don't, I don't think there's a need to say that the town did anything. We're not looking for credit-
No.
-to do it, you know what I mean? The Women's Club put it together and, and the Veterans Administration-
That's fine.
And decided, me personally, I, I, I don't think we need our name on it. I mean, to go and just put it on there just because we took it over, that's, that's not what we're here for. I mean, so I wouldn't go around doing it just because you think that we should have our name on there. I don't think we need it.
I wouldn't be opposed if you can add the, the Metroport Veterans Association, because I think that they did, they, they stepped up and the bricks and everything.
Well, we have actually-
I agree with Tim, I agree with Tim. I don't need credit. The town doesn't need credit because we finished, I mean, the, the whole reason for my motion was just to finish what was started, because it was just languishing and nobody was doing, it looked terrible. And so, you know what I mean? That was the whole reason for my motion.
And then you did all the work, so.
Yeah.
To let you know, Metroport Veterans perch, uh, had a large flagstone, which is right along the sidewalk. We had that lifted up and taken over to the engraver. And we now have a large stone, it's four feet, uh, three and a half feet across, two and a half feet high, and it's right off the sidewalk, and it, it has all the logos of the military on it, and it says Metroport Veterans Association right across the front.
I just want y'all to get-
So, that's already there.
Yeah, I wanted y'all to get some credit because you, you did step up and fill the gap.
All right, Greg?
Well, the six pillars, you know, branches of services, will they have dedicated dates on them?
No.
No. Just trying to tie it in with, you would have dates there.
Yeah, no, there'll be no dates for the actual branches and when they came, when they got, that's why people are normally saying Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines and all, the actual order is Army, Marines, and the Navy because of the governmental recognition.
That's fine, I just thought maybe they would have dedication dates, okay.
No dates.
All right. Any other discussion on this matter? Any comments from citizens? All right, hearing none, I don't think we necessarily need to take any action. You've had a report on where it's headed and what we're doing. Tom, do you need any other direction from us based on our comments?
No, sir.
All right. Jim, thank you very much for heading this up.
My honor.
Both, both things, and really excited about the coming two events as they come forward for us.
Just one thing, too, in the event I get hit by a bus on the way home or something, and I'm not here anymore, we've got Dennis Sheridan, who's a member, he's a vice president of the Metroport Veterans, we've got Carl Munger, who heads up Gallen Feu and the Metroport Veterans. So, we've got people that will continue to do what I'm doing, even if I'm not around or out of town or whatever. It'll be covered by, by a veteran.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, now we'll move to item 13. Discuss, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on April 25th, 2017 council agenda, and items from the town council future agenda list to include discussion of the below item A, item number three, detailed review of nuisance ordinance. So, first, if you would go to page 133 of your packet, it is the proposed agenda for April 25th. So, I had a couple of things that I would like to see on the 25th and surely open for discussion from people. One is that I would like the staff to present to us the town hall budget and planned aspects, what I'm gonna call furniture and fixture expenses. I'm not sure that's what it was totally called. My memory of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that for those items, that was coming from the general fund. It was not part of our bond indebtedness. And so, there was an amount there, and what I'm looking for is that amount compared to what you're planning to spend to see what's available, and, and at least a detail enough that council understands what you're buying, what you're dealing with. So, that's one item I'd like to see, and if you can do it by the 25th, great. If you can't, then just tell us it needs to get delayed, but I'd like to see it by then. Anybody else have a comment about that item? Any objection to us having that? All right, the other thing is, I had identified three sections of our packet, I think, that we got at the last meeting, that looked at the various reallocations of contingency funds on the town hall building. Now, for me, it was reallocation of oh-one, item number two, reallocation of oh-four, item number two, and reallocation of oh-six, item number three. Those dealt with on reallocation of oh-one, it was data conduits is my abbreviation of that. On oh-four, it was monumentation sign, it was some changes to get electricity to it, I think, that kind of thing. And on oh-six, it was keypads, cards, readers, that kind of thing. Now, to me, some of these items raise the question as I begin to look at them is, why is it coming from our contingency fund when some of these items should have been caught either by the architect or by our construction manager at risk, which reviewed all the plans? So, shouldn't they be stepping up to the plate here? Now, I didn't have all the data in front of me, and we didn't have that discussion really, and, and so what I'm looking for, Tom, is detail about what that is, and there was a lot of detail in the packet, so, so I think a lot of it is there. But it, it says that it's coming from contingency, but some of it looks like it ought to come from the construction manager's contingency fund, and I don't even know where that sits. So, if we could have- So if we could have some detail about that construction manager at risk, Steel Freeman's contingency fund, and are we really managing that appropriately is what I'm looking for. Now-
Can we leave that kind of open-ended to just contingency, not to those specific three items?
Yeah.
Because there's, there's some other things that I would like to-
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with that. I just identified the three things that I really had questions about, and, and so I think if we can get it at this next agenda to kind of review all of those aspects of the contingency fund and who's responsible, and, and be able to have that. I recognize that part of our situation that we find ourselves in is that the, two of the people very much involved in town hall project are no longer with us. So I think we lost some data there because of that, and maybe, I think both of those gentlemen left under very good terms, and have been more than willing to help us in situations, and maybe we need to reach out to them to clarify any points that we don't know. So what I'm hearing, Tom, is other councils support that aspect, but leaving it open enough to not just say those items. But those are the items that at least you know I, I had questions about. I think if you have some specific questions, council, it might be nice that you email those to Tom, so that we get as much data as we can when we get there. Tom, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to ask for that as well. We'll be happy to look at all the items, but if you have any in particular, please let us know.
All right. Anybody else about the next agenda, April 25th?
Do y'all want to wait to canvass? I can put an agenda item on May 9th, most likely we won't have the official election results by then, but I was initially proposing a special council meeting on May 17th, just for canvassing. I don't know if y'all want to discuss that now or at another time.
Was that on this agenda to decide that?
Consent number four.
Okay, yeah. So that's where we were trying to say, do we have a special meeting to canvas the vote? Because it's a timing issue at this point, as to when we actually get the data and have a council meeting. The law does not require us to have a quorum, which is an interesting thing. We just have to have two council meetings, two council members there, which is even more confusing in the law.
Elections.
Yeah, it's elections, yeah. So, and, and then it dealt with the swearing in, any, any parting comments that council members that are leaving would like to make at that meeting, and then of course, any comments that swear, that candidates being sworn in. I was in favor of trying to do all of that at our council meeting, other than the issue of getting the canvas done in time. My experience is that those people that are elected like to have family attend. I wouldn't necessarily want to have a, a meeting that was less important to maybe them than our normal process. So let's hear your comments, so that we know. What Holly's saying is, we can put an agenda item on May-
May 9th.
May 9th to canvas, but she doesn't think we'll actually have the final figures by then, because it takes several days for Denton County elections to really process all the provisional ballots.
Right.
I don't, I don't mind, I think we did that last year, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I think that once we swear in though, I, I think that that, I would like to see that maybe start at 6:30 and do all of that upfront, swear everybody in, so that once we start a meeting, they're already seated on the dais. I, I think that my experience has been that it's an uncomfortable shift, you know, in the middle of a meeting, and I've even seen some meetings where it's at the very end because they wanted to get business taken care of.
Well, we certainly won't do that.
So I, I just think that, you know, there, there potentially is a lot of people that come, and I think it would be nice to have a little reception, have it at 6:30, have the swearing, take all the pictures and everything, and then boom, start the meeting.
All right, can other council member please comment, so that we can see what your wishes are at this point?
I agree with Phillip's comments.
All right, Lamont?
Being on two different ends of this situation, one where it kind of got jerked around for a couple of days, and one where we had a little ceremonial in the back room because something was going on, I think we have two new council members that'll be elected, and I think it's important that their family and friends, if they want to come, and that we do it right, and not just, you know, a quicky little ceremony. I, I'd just like to see it done upfront.
Yeah, May 23rd is the regular meeting date, that's the appropriate time to do the swearing in. How the agenda is ordered, what Phillip's saying makes sense, and we should just do the canvassing on the 17th, if that's the last day, because it sounds like, it sounds like Denton County is using stone tablets, and they get it to us right at the end, so we can just schedule it, whoever, whoever's in town can, can just come in if it's only two people. I mean, you know, just inconvenience the minimum number of people to basically vote on something that we have no authority over anyway.
Surely Lamont will not be available.
Tim, do you have a comment?
I would just-
I will change, I will change.
I would just say, yeah, I would definitely have it on earlier, 6:15 or so, to make sure there's enough time to, for both the new council people to say a little something, and to, you know, I don't know if their family want to take pictures and stuff and all that, yeah, so.
All right, so Tom, what I think I hear consensus is, is that we can go ahead and have a special meeting on the 17th? Does it really have to be a agenda council meeting?
As opposed to this.
Okay.
Canvas, and it's a new election code, not the under, open meeting.
So, but, but we wouldn't have, we potentially wouldn't have a majority?
Correct.
Yeah, you still got to post seventy-two hours in advance, and that's why I was trying to look for a direction, that way I can-
Okay. If it's in the morning, I can make-
Yeah, same here. I mean, it's, it's pointless, it's, I mean, let's be realistic, it's purely a statutory requirement, so let's not belabor it. We've already talked about it longer than it will actually last.
Yeah.
You said the 17th on a Wednesday?
Yes, because that's the last day you can canvass.
Here in the day.
And then we were trying to figure out a date that people were around.
Yeah, can we do it at 9:00 AM?
Yeah, I can be here.
Jim?
As long as it's not Wednesday evening, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so I think what I've heard is the 17th is a good canvas day, we can do it 9:00 AM or something in the morning, and deal with it appropriately.
And then Tom can take us to breakfast.
Who's going to take us to breakfast?
Tom.
Apparently I am. We're getting the leftover pancake.
He's buying.
Wait a minute, I'm not approving the expense report.
You're not invited.
Oh, well, then I'm surely, I'm surely not approving it. Okay.
Thanks, y'all.
All right, so the other part of our future agenda session is item number three, which has been there a while, a review of the nuisance ordinance. This is our time that it comes back to us, just to be able to say, it's back here, guys, what are we doing on it? Is there any work being done on it?
I've, I've reviewed the ordinance, I went through with Thad and Terry in the court too, to look at the numbers as far as what's coming in. The process is, Thad'll give them notice, sometimes it's official notice, sometimes it's just a knock on the door, a door hanger. Ninety percent of them are getting taken care of before the citation is issued, then I went there. I also looked at the language, and I haven't had that many come to court or that many citizens complaints that have gotten to me, they've been handled before there. Most of them are going to be high weeds, grass, outside storage, just not maintaining your property type, type things. Some get into the area that could be more just neighbor disagreement, harassment, something like that. Try to evaluate those, and if we can help them, help them, otherwise direct them where they can, walk through what they will and will not need to prove on that. They're pretty broad, we do have a good catch-all, which is what I like in that.
Yeah, and that was my main, actually, my main impetus for asking this question is, is it as written enough to catch the thing so that we don't have people coming back saying, "Riding ordinance about, uh, my, my neighbor left a tire on his-"
Well, yeah, I don't want to be that-
"Oh, my neighbor left an old dead battery in my yard." You know, I mean, there's like, people come to us with random things, and we already have this catch-all, so I want to make sure we're-
In cases of the tire I would hit, look at for mosquito issues-
Yeah.
Battery for environmental issues, as well as your general outside storage and things like that. Another town, classic example I had was, two neighbors didn't get along, one could see into the other's backyard from their breakfast area, and the neighbor, one neighbor was a sculptor, and he would sculpt things with a chainsaw and wood, and the neighbor whose breakfast area looked out over that didn't really appreciate it and have the same taste. But then you get into a freedom of speech issue. The final blow in that one was the sculptor sculpted a hand with a certain gesture- And left it in his backyard in his property, and there's nothing we can do. I have to say, it was very well done, it had knuckles and fingernails.
It was highly detailed.
I think, I think part of the issue that I wanted addressed was our noise situation. We had a past, in the, in the past couple of years, we had an issue where somebody had a weekend party or a party in their backyard, had a band, the music was, or a lot of music very loud, police went out numerous times, asked them to cut it, you know, turn it down. It really became quite a conflict issue. What I heard from the chief was, it's extremely hard to do much about it.
On the decibel-
Right.
-of an ordinance, on just a sound ordinance, it has to be a certain thing from a certain area, that is a little difficult, but typically on that, you could do disturbing or kind of come up with something else. Think outside-
So I guess-
I think we do have stuff on the books that you can enforce there.
So my issue is, I'm not sure the police department understood how to enforce it.
That's, that's one that I didn't, and I have not talked to the PG about it as much as Thad and-
So if you would please talk to them before we remove it, that was my major-
And that was always the one that was the most nebulous, I would agree, so yeah, we can just make sure we're good there.
A lot of noise complaints like that end up in minors and possessions and DUI minors and cases like that, rather than a nuisance case.
But I know that-
But if it's adults.
The issue with a decibel level-
That's a difficult case.
Is a difficult thing because wind, humidity, a lot of thing has to do with that, and it's not necessarily decibel, sometimes it's the bass aspect.
Correct.
And the bass aspect doesn't exceed the decibel amount, but then becomes a nuisance.
And I'll say, in this general area, the decibel's become much more difficult with the airport nearby.
Mm-hmm.
People are less sensitive, I don't know if it-
All right, so if you'll just at least look at the police side, and then we can look at it next time it comes up to whether or not we remove it. So any other items for future agenda, council?
Yes.
All right, Phillip?
I would like for us to start thinking about, or for staff to start thinking about and bring to us the impact and contingency plan for the town should the mud bond fail. I asked my neighbor, who is a mud director, should the mud bond fail, and they went to revenue bonds, and they, he sent me an email that their strategist did, their new gen strategy, and it says, if, if all of this recovered in volumetric rates, each rate tier would need to increase by approximately eighty-seven cents per thousand gallons. I don't know if that's accurate, but it probably is something that we should have staff research and start preparing for in the event that that does happen, and they do go the revenue bond direction.
All right, good.
Because it could impact us greatly.
I'd like you'll add that, staff do research and about the impact and have a contingency plan if the mud bond fails, that's currently been called.
So we, we won't, this, we shouldn't see this until after the election, when we know the results.
Phillip, could you forward that information to us?
What's that?
That information about the rate change if the bond fails.
I can send that to you, but it probably is something that you should reach out to the mud to see what-
Yeah.
Yeah, what, because I don't know if, this, this was saying, based on FY 2017 revenue bond debt payment of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand and fifty-nine cents, but I don't know if that's, if they're trying to collect that all in 2017, or if that's going to be spread out over, I don't know how they're doing that.
Okay.
But eighty cents is shocking, so.
All right, any other issues or comments about the future agenda item thirteen? Anybody? All right, we will then move on. It is 8:24 PM, and we will convene into executive session pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act. The council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. Section 551-071, consultation with attorney under subsection two, to consult with the town attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflict with the Texas Open Meetings Act, enforcement of ordinances, and item 11, dealing with public education and government peg channel fee. Amber, if you would stay with us, we are in executive session. I'll ask everybody to please leave the council chambers, and council, if you need to take a short break, please do so. Council, it is 8:50, and we have reconvened into regular session. Item number 15, consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Council, any item that you wish to act upon? All right, council, we also refer item 11 to executive session discussion. Any discussion or action on consider and take appropriate action regarding the public education and government peg channel fee? All right, hearing no one seeking the floor, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made.
Secretary.
Moved by Mayor Protem Lamont, seconded by Perro, we are adjourned at 9:51.
Whoa.
I mean, 8:51, wrong thing.
Wow. I didn't see that coming.